Your mics whenever it's time. Good morning. We'll open the hearing for today, May 25th, and if we could all stand to flag, salute the flag, I'm gonna wake up anytime now. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to take note that all commissioners are present this morning. Are there going to be any agenda changes today?
There are no agenda changes.
There are no agenda changes. We do have one request for continuance, but we'll take that up when that item comes up.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go to the consent agenda and approval of minutes from the May 11th, 2017 meeting.
Public comment?
Are we doing public comment today?
Public comment.
Wanna do that?
That comes before you.
Thank you.
I come for public comments.
Good morning.
It's good to see all of you today.
I am lost this morning.
And more than I saw in the video last time, which is a, which is a good thing. We needed everybody here, I think, last time. I have some questions regarding the Dollar General store. I'd like an update to where it stands, so everybody in the community knows what's going on. Could Peter Maurer address this, or not?
Well, this is an opportunity for you to make comments of the commission.
Okay, so I'm also allowed to ask questions as well, and if you choose not to answer, that's fine. I understand that they have, they've come back, and we are gonna have a public meeting regarding their application. They're gonna submit plans at that meeting, so we'll be able to take a gander at them and the other people in the community, the general community, all the way from Valley Springs to the railroad flat will be able to comment on the Dollar General store that's just down the street from me, or proposed Dollar General store that's down the street from me. It was an interesting meeting to watch, and I have a problem. And that problem is, you said we have, you say we're gonna take projects in their entirety from now on, specifically this project. Well, when I look at other projects, Mr. Jed Richardson's project is a good example of this, where he's proposing a tasting room. Well, we're not looking at what his plans are for that tasting room, the lighting scheme, and other things. And you, people can just come up here and tie things up indefinitely, causing, causing you a backlog at some point. You already have enough to deal with when it comes to municipal marijuana without causing further problems. People can, you know, he's a mountain rash. People can come from as far away as West Point and buy that one up, throw a wrench in it. So I do have, I do have problems with that. Well, I'm not gonna publicly humiliate Mr. Lattich, because he's a, he's a fair man, but I do think that he was, he advocated a bit too far for the people that weren't directly affected by this store. The community of West Point very much needs it, and we are without a lot of the basic commercial services that a lot of people in the county and outside the county have. We're a poorer county. We need a tax base, we need services. We have elderly population in West Point that would benefit from that. We have, we have working families, which, which trip to Jackson, which is considerable, considerable in gas fare, considerable in wear on their vehicles, considerable in time, they're limited for time as they have children, and they choose to live in the community where they could take care of these children and not live in a city which, where they may make more money and have those conveniences, but they wanna have time with their families. And you're taking time away from, from them when you, when you delay something so very needed. So, that. Now, somebody mentioned that public humiliation of a public official is a threat. Everything is a threat to a public official. That's, that's part of getting the, of having the position. Understand that people are gonna be angry with you. People are gonna come up and they're gonna tell you darn well what they think, but that's what you signed up for. Just accept it. Okay? Are we good?
Your comments?
That was my comment to you, and from that smiling face of you, I can tell you're gushing with love for me, so let's, let's leave it there. I do thank you for bringing up the fact that, on our project, that we did ask for an extension and not a specific timeframe. That's the last meeting. So, I look forward to you doing a fantastic job. You're new here, as some other one, other you are, and it's very important that you take the community that is, you know, we usually defer to-
Mr. Stoudamire, you have about 30 seconds.
Commission, yeah, we usually defer to the commissioner where the district is, where the action is being taken, where the project is, and I hope that all of you can, can represent that to your districts very well. All right?
Thank you.
Have a very good day, and take care. You too.
Is there any more public comment? Okay. Now we'll go to those approval of the minutes for May 11th, 2017. Does anybody have any corrections or changes to the minutes?
Not at all.
Okay.
I move that we adopt the minute.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And Commissioners Wooster and Bacheli, I believe, are going to abstain because they were not present for the hearings.
Correct.
You're looking at me, what do you want to say? Okay. All right, then motion carries on the minutes. Three, two, zero, and then two. Okay. Moving on to public hearings, we'll go to 2016-1144 for a zoning amendment for Kevin and Teresa Locke, and who are going to present for us today?
Good morning.
Good morning.
New microphones, okay. Everybody can hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Madeline Flanjo, Planning Department. Today I'm presenting the request for a zoning amendment 2016-1144 for Kevin and Teresa Locke. The zoning amendment proposed is from Rural Residential. The designation for this site is RR20/RRX, which means 20 acre minimum parcel size and cannot be further subdivided, and the proposal is to go to Residential Agriculture-X, which means it cannot be further subdivided. The current use of the parcel is as a five acre vineyard. It also includes a barn. The intended uses, additional uses include a tasting room and special events. The location of the parcel, it is right on Highway 4 at the intersection of Green Meadow Court between Douglas Flat and Murphy's. APN is 068-056-001, and the address is 949 Green Meadow Court. This is an aerial view showing the vineyard and the barn in the southern portion, and you can see the frontage along Highway 4, Green Meadow Court there, and the encroachment, which is the first one right off of the highway as you turn onto Green Meadow Court. There's a street view showing the gate, the barn, and the vineyard in the background. Site specifics, this parcel is 7.44 acres in size. General plan, land use designation is under the Murphy's-Douglas Flat Community Plan for Rural Residential. The site is developed with a 1,680 square foot barn, five acre vineyard, parking, landscaping, and the encroachment onto Green Meadow Court, and it is surrounded by rural residentially used zone parcels. The purpose of the RR and RA zones, the RR zone is intended to provide lands for personal ranches, in which residential is the primary use. RA is intended to be a district in which an equal emphasis is assigned to residential and agricultural uses. Sorry, there is a typo there. The parcel currently contains a vineyard and a barn, which is more consistent with the residential agricultural zoning. Both Rural Residential and Residential Agriculture are consistent zonings under the Murphy's-Douglas Flat Community Plan land use designation of Rural Residential. For this zoning amendment, we did an initial study, negative declaration, which was prepared and circulated for review and comment period from April 12th, 2017 to May 2nd, 2017. The county received only one comment letter, which was signed by five of the residents on Green Meadow Court. They were primarily concerned about noise and traffic. With regards to noise, Calaveras County Code Section 1787.060 requires that all special events comply with the noise standards set forth in Chapter 9.02 Noise Control. In addition, the landowners have heavily insulated the barn to help minimize noise from inside the structure when they're having events. With regards to traffic, as you know, the Highway 4 corridor is heavily used, special events, wine tasting, recreation, tourism. In addition, this encroachment is the first one off of the highway, therefore, traffic really would not increase in the neighborhood past the property. In addition, the code section 060.C also requires that parking be on-site, no street parking is permitted. Therefore, that sums up my zoning amendment presentation, and let me know if you have any questions.
I do. Could you go back to the street level picture? By the way, thank you for getting this so quickly. And that obviously was taken rather late in the year, because the grapevines are already showing little signs of autumn, but I just wanted to call attention to the amount of air that is along the fence line, as well as the grapevines themselves. When we get around to talking about the noise screening effect of those vines, I just wanted the commissioners to note that. How many parcels total are there on this court?
Report says six.
Yes, there are six.
Six, so, thank you. Are there any limitations on the number of attendees permitted at a RA zone property, special events?
It would be limited by the physical constraints of the site. Because all parking would need to be on-site, there would need to be, you know, that would be the capacity based on how many people they could park. Our code does not establish a limit on the number of people for special events of this nature.
And the parking, they could come up with a parking plan, shuttle buses and stuff if they needed to, right?
Yes, the code does allow that also.
So special event use on rural residential parcels, parcels are limited to an incidental or accessory use to a bona fide agricultural operation. Would a celebration of a wedding of a couple otherwise unrelated to the business of the parcel be a special event that would not, that would not be permitted on a rural residential parcel?
The acreage, it's a 20 acre minimum requirement for rural residential, and they're under that at 7.4.
Well, it's a 20 acre minimum to have a tasting room or whatever, but that could have a special event. If any special event on rural residential is limited to something that is accessory to a bona fide agricultural operation, I'm not exactly sure what that would mean, but if somebody just hired the property now for a special event, got a permit, could they have a wedding there now?
With an AUP, with an administrative lease permit.
So that would be accessory to an agricultural operation. I just, I wondered. So, let me know if I'm correct, and my understanding is, we're concerned here with a switch from rural residential to rural agricultural, and it appears to me that a change to RA zoning would, could result in a newly authorized winery and a newly authorized tasting room. I understand there's, there's no mention in here about a winery, but a tasting room is in the prospect. In addition, under the RA classification, the applicant could have up to 12 special events in a calendar year as a permitted use without needing to apply for any use permit. I also understand that while a use permit can condition approval with restrictions that go further than the noise ordinance, such restrictions would not be available on an RA property with its 12 permitted events a year. Further, if there were more than 12 events, then there's a section that says live music in conjunction with a tasting room would be exempt from the permit requirements subject to the noise. Also, special events would no longer be required to be a use incidental or accessory to a bona fide agricultural operation. Now, the definition of special event in Section 17.06.1807 includes carnivals, circuses, and concerts, or musical events that are acoustic, amplified, recorded, or hosted by a disc jockey. Those events would be permit, would be under the rural agricultural permitted use without the need for a use permit, as long as all special event parking restrictions and noise ordinancees were obeyed. I also understand that under the noise ordinance, use of any loudspeaker, PA system, et cetera, would be permitted between 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM, and even after 10:00 PM, sound amplifying equipment and live music could be measured up to 50 decibels at the property line. Do I have this right, as far as you?
Yes.
Then, would the owner gain any other significant benefits from changing this property to rural agricultural?
There are increased permitted uses under RA that are not in RR. Right. Farm sales.
Roadside stands, things of that nature.
And in the discussion for questions F and G under your mandatory findings of significance, what does the initial study mean by best management practices?
Perhaps I can-
Tell me that section again.
This is under the mandatory findings of significance, questions F and G. The discussion in part says that the, was anticipating that for the application of best management practices, there would be less than significant effect. I wasn't clear what those are and who would be doing them.
Perhaps I can respond to that. Best management practices, or BNP, is referred to, are standardized applications of grading activity, other types of, basically applied to erosion control and other forms to ensure that erosion doesn't occur, and other, I mean, it typically applies to erosion, and so they are, there's a huge, there's a big handbook of best management practices. It's not like, it sounds sort of funny, best, you know, like, well, we're gonna do okay management practices, rather than best management practices. So, BNP's are applied with any type of grading permit, or you're constructing roads or anything like that, to ensure that the slopes are stabilized, that no erosion occurs, and there are BNP for a wide variety of different activities associated with construction, and primarily applied to engineering and grading activities.
Okay, so that, that's, you're talking about best management practices, is not an overall, how we're gonna take care of this property. It's specifically a term of art that pertains to erosion control-
Yes.
And roads.
Yeah.
And who would be doing those practices, the capital?
Well, the contractor or owner of the property would be required to do those, or the department, any permits, if they-
And that would be under a permit. Yeah, okay, thank you very much. That's all I have.
Any other commissioners have any questions?
I have a question to follow up. Was there any contact with these five landowners that wrote the letter, April 27th, it's attached at the very end of our package? Did they contact you folks?
I spoke to a few people on the phone about it. People had questions about what are they looking to do, what's going on, and said, well, they're looking at doing possible special events, tasting rooms, things of that nature. And they asked general questions, that's prior to the letter being sent.
The letter says that they've left four messages, not received return calls.
Yeah, I don't know who exactly wrote, but I did, I did speak to at least two people that I remember.
Two of this group of five?
People that said they lived on the road, yes, in the area, so.
Yeah, it was unclear to me whether it was the department not returning calls, or the applicant.
Right, and I may have spoke to them between them sending the letter and, and us repeating the letter, I don't know, but.
Do you have any other questions? Okay. Commissioners Sisk? No.
No.
Okay. Then I'd like to ask for the applicant to come up and hear from them.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Kevin Locke, the applicant, and I'm representing my wife also, Teresa Locke. Wanted to give you some background on who we are and how long we've been in the community and the properties involved with the project and also our business, Locke Vineyards. Teresa and I moved to the county 33 years ago. We've lived in this county for 33 years, raised our children here, and we both have had our professional careers here. I retired three years ago from state and private service. My wife still runs a private business in Angels Camp. She's been doing that for over 20 something years. Background of this, just to show you that we've been in this community a long time, and this is something that is a long-term project. This is not a get-rich-quick deal. Anybody who's been in the vineyard business knows this is not a get-rich-quick deal. So, this is a generational thing that we want to pass on to our children. My younger daughter's involved with the project, and has been, and went to college in special events, planning, so we're trying to do this very professionally, and she wants to do this as a career and a generational thing. Except, both of us have been long involved in the community. We first started Locke Vineyards 25 years ago by purchasing a piece of property on Michael Road. It is still a vineyard. We did that just to start growing grapes, and we were just primarily a grape grower in the beginning. So we've been involved in agriculture and wine business fairly early on, so we're not newcomers to this at all. The vineyard on Michael Road, just to give you some background, has been there 25 years. It did burn in the Butte Fire. We are in the process of replanting it and redoing it, but I think that further shows the commitment to what we are all about and that- That's why I'm going after this meeting, actually, to go work on the vineyards more. So, that vineyard is getting reestablished and is still gonna be part of Locke Vineyards. That was 25 years ago. The property that, in question, we purchased over 20 something years ago, so we have owned the property on the highway, Green Meadow Court property, over 20 years. When we bought that property, it was bare ground, so everything they are showing you, we have developed over the years. That property, we put the vineyards in approximately 18 years ago, so the vineyard was put in there, the barn was put in about 15 years ago. We, on that property, we've had three different permits, building permits, so everything we've done, we've certainly tried to, we are doing it with consultation with the county. We had a permit to build the barn, we had a permit to remodel the barn that we just completed, that was a lot of the soundproofing that they were talking about. We put, paid extra money to have the barn heavily soundproofed. The entrances, everything, were designed with this in mind. So this project's been kind of in our mind for a long time and been slowly planned, kind of to do it right, you know, that we're trying to do this correct. The permit was a remodel permit, and then we also pulled the permit, put a sign up on the front corner of the property. So we've had three different permits, and we will probably have subsequent permits, you know, when we actually try to, you know, start the business, we'll have to do additional permits for walkways, other things. Locke Vineyards, like I said, was established in about 25 years ago. Our label, we, that was the vineyard part of it, the wine part of it was started, 2003 was our first vintage that we labeled under both vineyards, and that has been wholesale. And then about three years ago, we started a tasting room downtown Murphy's, so we've had a tasting room downtown Murphy's for about three years ago. The reason to, that we want to have the tasting room on the highway is just because we want to have a more family-type approach to it, an educational approach, and embody agritourism. Not that I have anything against being downtown, but I'm not really into running a wine bar, and a lot of the wineries are downtown for that reason, to be more wine bar-type venues. And we want to have more of a family, area where people can picnic or just come, and we're in the process of putting in lavender farms, cut flowers, other products, culinary products, which would entail growing those on-site and doing, the emphasis of the property will be educational workshops and smaller-type venues. When they say special events, I really don't think most of the things we're gonna do are gonna fall under special events, what a special event is. Most of them are gonna be very small, during the day, workshops, tours, agriculture-related. Been approached many times, there are people that want to do weddings there, I do not want to do weddings there, I've told my neighbors that, I'm not in the wedding business, don't want to be in the wedding business. Not to say I won't ever have a wedding there, I have two daughters, so we may have a wedding there, but I, it is, if you've been to the property, I don't think it's a very good venue for weddings. You hear more traffic than anything, and the same with the music venue. To have any kind of music outdoors, you would really hear more traffic from the highway than music. It's very noisy, that's why we put the extra soundproofing. In the barn, not so much to help the neighbors so they wouldn't hear it, but also so you wouldn't hear the traffic. Except, we're gonna do agritourism. Our hours of operation are gonna be Friday, Saturday, Sunday, 11 to 5, like most wineries on the highway. Really doesn't pay to have those, you know, other days open, some wineries downtown are open seven days, but we really be, are planning on being open those three days, plus holidays, and maybe some extended hours during certain times of the year. Again, special events would be very rare and unique, that's not gonna be a normal operation. As I said, we planned this property a long time, we have incorporated mitigation as we've gone along. We did plant those vines along the fence, they're really not very great for growing grapes, but they do provide screening and soundproofing. We have put additional layers- We have put additional layers where we've put some screening fences and we'll put vines on there. So we're going to heavily landscape that area for screening, visual and noise during the day. Traffic again, where the gate was put there on purpose, so it would be minimal obstruction to the neighbors. We will put directional signs. We will post hours. If there are mitig, other mitigations we can do is put signs on the road also that this is a private road, do not go past this point, whatever that would do. So we are open to other mitigation and we have done, I think, as much mitigation as we can to try to minimize intrusion on the neighbors. I believe that's all I have. I don't know if there's any questions, but I think that's, again, this is a long-term thing that we're trying to do and we're trying to promote economics and agritourism in the county and try to have a more family-oriented, visitor-oriented venue here, which is low-key. We're really low-key. I really, probably will have very minimal or no events in the evening, just because of liability and also concerns with the neighbors also. I wouldn't want, you know, things in my neighborhood either during the evening, so there will be very minimal events after dark.
I do have a couple of questions.
Sure.
But first, I want to say I drove by your property the other day, walked around on the road and, and I compliment you on your stewardship of the land. I mean, it's a very nicely tended piece of property and I would expect that any development you make would be also in, in good taste, just judging by the way things look right now. But what we need to look at today is the, the possible effects, the changes from zoning of RR to RA and take into account the requirements of the California Environmental Quality Act. So I have a few questions on that score. I think you've made it pretty clear what changes you're anticipating, but of course, the new zoning would permit you, if you had a complete change of personality, permit you to, to have special events that, that could have a lot of people there and recorded music and et cetera. So we need to take into the concerns of the rest of the, of the community that are remaining as, as rural residential. Do you anticipate then that onsite parking would be sufficient for all tasting and special events? Once you get your parking.
Well, I think, I think Plan Director Maurer stated that the, the property is limited to amount of parking. We've had some private events there now that probably accommodate fifty to sixty people that, that pretty much all fit inside the barn and you're really limited to the amount of parking and, and, and just geo, the space of the area is really not that big. So I really, you know, I really don't anticipate, we'll probably plan for parking for fourteen to sixteen parking spaces and maybe a little overflow area, maybe twenty, twenty-five cars. They said they're going to be there. To me, the property is more valuable to grow things than to just make a huge parking lot out of it. So I really, I value the property more for agricultural uses such as flowers, lavender farm, other things of that nature. So I don't want, you know, parking lots can get very huge if you look at some of the other big wineries, but we really want to be small and don't want to make a huge parking lot out of the area. So, and, and if you had an event, again, it would be fairly restricted to, it's just really not that big a property.
Yeah, and on, on the tasting room itself, as far as I could tell from the site plan, that it's, it's, it's going to be eleven feet wide within your current barn, is that correct?
About a third of the barn will be a formal tasting room. About six, six hundred square feet.
And the rest, the rest of the barn is, is storage for wine?
Our overflow area, people in formal type gatherings, you know, if we do educational things or other things, that's where, again, if we did any small, I don't want to call them events because they're really not special events, but agritourism, you know, workshop, educational thing, or maybe a small little dinner or lunch or whatever, it would be inside the barn where we could hold, I think, thirty, forty people.
You're going to have a patio and a garden, would that's going to be for picnics and perhaps for some special events that are appropriate for outside?
Well, again, I don't use that term spec, again, it's your, it's your term, not mine, but a special event to me has a certain.
It's in the ordinance.
Yeah, a special event has a certain connotation, you know, like you said, concert, a carnival. It's a pretty big event open to the public. If we do have events, most of them are going to be wine club, private events, closely monitored, not open to the public. So when, when you use that term special event, I, to me, it has a whole different connotation than a private, you know, that, and, but we do have two overflow, we have a patio already, excuse me, a patio off of the back of the barn and we're going to probably pour another patio off the front. But they are going to be more for just people to sit out there and enjoy the day or a glass of wine.
And what sort of lighting do you anticipate for the proposed, the driveway and the parking area?
Probably minimal or none, because again, our hours are going to be eleven to five and I really don't want evening events. I don't want to put outdoor lighting to distract my neighbors. I don't want the liability. I've already talked to my insurance carrier and once you do evening events, it's a whole different, they're really opposed to me doing that. So I really don't want evening events, so lighting will be very minimal. We didn't even, we did not even light the front sign just because I didn't want a lit sign there. I'm very aware of lighting pollution, so really don't want to put a lot of outdoor lighting. There's two porch lights on the barn and there'll probably be some minimal lighting. But again, most, most of our hours are going to, during the summer, we're closed at five, five, thirty, so.
And the minimal lighting, would that be just low, just to light the pavement?
Just the porch and the, the walkway, right? But I do not plan to put lighting, you know, outdoor lighting for a big parking lot, so that's, that's really not, the parking lot's going to be low, minimal gravel-type parking lot. We'll put in handicap parking as per code. But again, it's, the idea is to really keep it more agricultural look versus a big, big commercialized look.
So, and I appreciate that you say you're open to mitigation and, and that you plan to put in some, I take it there'd be solid screens to, to help mask the sound?
Well, right now, we, we put in wired lattice screens and I'm planting vines on them, so they're going to be evergreen vines, so it'll be solid greenery plus shrubbery. As shrubbery grows in through the years, we're going to layer that in there and makes sound. You know, solid screening doesn't, to me, look very attractive, you know, if I start putting big sound fences up and barricades. So I'm trying to make it look compatible with agritourism, but also provide screening. Again, there is so much noise from that highway, any, any noise, if you can go out there and did a sound study, you would hear way more from the truck traffic and all the log, you know, the dead logs coming down the highway. You can stand there and hear way more truck traffic that the neighbors are going to hear that probably way more than what they would hear off my property.
Now, of course, you know, with the, the sound of the highway is, is kind of a constant and, and what I imagine the neighbors are concerned about would be in case there's a change of plans and special events would have, you know, live music or PA systems and that sort of thing. And just, I doubt that, that just having vines on an open screen would mask the sound effectively.
I think it would. I think you're, I think I've, I've been in, my degree's in plant biology and I have a lot of background in that and I've done sound studies in my professional career and vegetation does a very good job for screening, especially layered. So we're doing this professionally and trying to do, you know, multiple layers. It's not one wall's going to take care of the screening and I think we're going to, we're going to have a lot of screening. And then mo, most of the activity's going to be inside, especially during the winter, you know, you're talking, people are not going to be sitting outside when it's thirty-five degrees. So again, we're talking seasonal, we're not talking all year round. We're talking, you know, and, and conversely, I don't think you're going to want to sit out on a patio when it's a hundred and five degrees in Murphy's. There's not a lot of shade out there, so most of the activity's going to be in that barn that's heavily, heavily soundproofed. We just had an event there, not event, but a, a party, again, I don't want to use that, use the term event. It was a private party that we had there and we went outside to see the noise level and you really couldn't even hear anything on the road within fifty feet of the barn, you know, so it's, again, it's a very thick-walled barn and it's, and we've done a lot of.
That comes with insulating it to preserve, protect the wine.
Oh, exactly. Yeah, we had, you know, yeah, we, we're doing that for a lot of reasons, but yeah, there was a lot of work and effort went into it to keep it that way.
In, in order to, I understand that your neighbors are upset by this.
I don't know if they are or not.
We'll see, I guess.
Yeah, I don't know. And, you know, again, my neighbors, the ones that signed that, I, I've invited all my neighbors to events there and a lot of, at least half or more of the people that signed that petition came to an event. We had, again, a private party that was last summer to show them what we're doing and I explained all this to them. So it's not like a lot of this is a surprise. We've owned this property twenty-plus years and if, anytime it's, you know, I'm there working, it's an open gate, I've talked to these individuals, so I, I don't know what they, you know, you know, anytime they want to ask me anything, I'm open. Again, we're not from out of the area, we live here. Again, they were inside my property there and were at, at the barbecue we had just to show them what we're doing, to try to be a good neighbor, to invite them there just to, if they had any input or anything. And a lot of them at that, nobody has voiced concerns up to this point, so I don't, I don't, I don't stand any issues. I don't believe any of them are here today, so I don't know how concerned they are or if one person is more concerned than others, you know, how these things go, so.
And you say you don't see any of them here today? Did you say you did not see any of them here today?
I haven't yet, at this point, unless they came in.
We'll see if they're here.
Yeah.
Would you be willing if, to reassure your neighbors as far as obtaining this zoning reclassification? Would you have any objection to committing yourself formally to your plans to put in screens and, and make them solid even if they're masked with vegetation?
Well, I don't know, what, what are you referring to solid?
Panels, so nowhere in between.
Well, I don't know what, what kind of panel you're talking about. Is it a special acoustic panel or just a piece of metal or, I don't, again?
I, I, in my, I'm not an expert.
Yeah.
In my experience, like, a wall is much better than a ivy hedge at, at acoustical masking.
I don't, I don't know, I didn't, unless somebody did a sound study or, again, I don't really, again, I would not commit to spending thousands of dollars on acoustic walls when I really, there is no need. I don't think we plan to have anything like, but we're certainly, if there are, if they hear a lot of noise, I think once, you know, the landscaping progresses, I don't think you're going to hear a whole lot of noise, other than I hear from them also that, you know, they're, they're making noise too, so, you know, it's a two-way street that a lot of them have had parties or other things going on. So we're trying to put as much screening, noise and visual as possible. I just don't want an ugly sound wall. I just don't think it fits in with that agricultural zoning.
The grapes along the fence line are a beautiful old grape, they were just planted twenty years ago?
Those are fifteen years, fifteen, sixteen years ago.
But do you consider that effective sound screening for the property?
It does a little bit, but that's why we're planting, we already put the fences in another fifteen feet. Again, you know, if you use vegetation layering, it does a lot better job. You know, it's not one wall, but another la, layer that's back.
The fence along the road, I mean, right now, what, about eighty percent of the fence line is open air, come on now.
During the summer, it's pretty solid.
Oh, you saw that picture, right?
Yeah, during the summer. But again, we're planting, we're doing other fences that are going to be a lot heavier than, and we're going to, we still haven't done all the landscaping, that we're going to put a lot of thick shrubbery in there. You know, certain fatina and certain shrubs that are three feet thick provide a lot of sound barrier. You'd be surprised. And again, I don't have control over the highway, so again, there's a lot of noise on the highway that oversees, you know, what I'm doing.
Okay, thank you very much.
You bet.
Are there any other commissioners have questions?
I have one.
Sure.
Why is it that you didn't apply for a rezoning change fifteen, eighteen years ago when you put in a commercial vineyard?
I came to the county and asked and then they said it wasn't needed. I probably, in retrospect, probably should have paid the two thousand dollars then instead of the four times, three times that now, but it's costing me a lot more money to do now. But I had no intention at that time to open a tasting room because I had a full-time job, you know, it was, again, would have been paid for it, but probably would have been easier to do it then or now. But, you know, again, I wasn't really, never had the intention at that time of opening the tasting room and, you know, the permitting does also provide for a winery and I, we have no intention of putting a winery in there also. You know, it, the zoning allows you to put a small winery in there and it's really economically and feasible to run a winery that, of that size. So we have ours housed within a bigger winery in the county.
Thank you.
Sure.
Can you tell me if Green Meadows Court, is that a privately maintained road?
Yes.
Is it paved or is it gravel?
That's paved road.
Thank you.
There is a, there is no road associated, there's supposed to be a road association, but there is no formal road association to pay for that, so I've, for twenty-something years, have tried to encourage all my neighbors to form, you know, to start paying into a road association because you're going to have to pay the piper at some time. That road's twenty-five years plus and is deteriorating, but nobody seems motivated to want to put money into it, you know, that it's one of those things that, those, private road maintenance has always been an issue in this county.
Mm-hmm, yes, I agree. Thank you.
Sure.
Can we take public comment on this now?
Sure, I'm done.
Yes, for right now.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody here that would like to make public comment? I will go back to Madeline to see if you had any rebuttals from any things that he said. You're good? All right. Do you have anything further you wanted to add?
Yes.
Okay.
I do want to add that through this whole process, your staff has been very professional. They all, in this letter, they said, in, just more in their defense, it said, someone said they called four times and did not return their calls. Every time I called, somebody answered the phone and answered me as best they could or got me the information that I needed. So I just, this letter that they wrote is a public record and it, it just upsets me a little bit that your staff did a very good job and tried to do whatever they could to get me answers and did a very professional job. And to say that they called four times and were never responded to, I just have a hard time believing that one. I called every time, all different times of the day and never had a problem getting through to your staff and getting answers. So I just wanted to make that as part of the public record because this is, they got to put this in the public record, so I, I just want to refute that and just say I did not have any issues and was serviced to, you know, in a very professional manner.
And I, I read that as, I couldn't tell whether they were talking about you didn't return calls or they didn't return calls. Would you like to also refute that you returned your calls?
Nobody ever called me.
Oh, okay.
Nobody ever, none of my neighbors, again, they were all, again, see me all the time, I waved to them, they, they've stopped in and, and, you know, and been on my property, so if they have had any issues, again, I don't know, you know, why they didn't come to me directly or whatever, but, you know, again, I, I just didn't like the tone of that or whatever. I just wanted to, if I could put that in the record, I would like to have that in the record.
It's in the record and I agree with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate those nice comments. Sometimes it's not a very thankful job.
One question for the planning department. Were the neighbors on notice that the meeting, this meeting was happening today?
Yes. So hopefully Scott answered their question in the last couple of weeks and they're happy. Thank you. All right, so I'm going to close the hearing and I'm going to bring it back to the commissioners for discussion. I, I have a lot of things I'd like to say.
Well.
But I'd like to start with you, Commissioner Wooster.
I, I don't have a lot to say, except that it seems to me that this is a proper project. It seems to me that this rezoning reflects what's on the ground as it should. It seems to me that the concerns about traffic and noise are adequately addressed by existing I think this is the kind of thing that ought to be happening in this county, with people taking the initiative, who know the market, who know what. with people taking the initiative, who know the market, who know what, what should, what will work here. I do not think that this commission should be in the business of trying to impose conditions on how he can do his business, and what kind of walls he should put up and so forth. I think that's best left to him, and existing rules adequately address it.
Well, I just-
I'm going to, I'm going to hold you, I'm just letting Commissioner Sisk have a moment to talk.
I actually like the project. My only concern is the progress of the road, which, there's going to be more traffic on that road. People will miss their turn, they'll go to the end of the road, they'll come back. But I don't think it should be that big of an issue. If it's a gravel road, I think that every once in a while, he could go off with his stuff to quickly to take care of it.
Well, the thought occurred to me that perhaps there ought to be some restrictions on things like no evening events and no lighting and that sort of stuff, but it sounds like Mr. Locke is well in tune with the neighbors, and probably do exactly what would be appropriate. And I, and I agree with Mr. Wooster. Sounds like a pretty good plan.
One of the things we have to do is look at what could happen with this rezoning. How does this open things up? And we do have a subdivision of six units, which all were initially and still are rated rural residential, and with one becoming rural agricultural, if anybody other than Mr. Locke were, were involved, I would be, I would be quite concerned about the possibilities of the, of the increase, the possible increase in sound. I think it's, I think it's be unrealistic to, to try and, and paint this picture not as things might become if everybody, if somebody took advantage of the rural agricultural zoning possibilities. I think under the circumstances, that this is a, a project that will be carried out with, with fine land stewardship, and I'm ready to approve it.
Okay. Going back to some of your issues, some of the surrounding properties are already zoned RA, and by right can do all of the things that he's talking about doing.
Not in this subdivision.
Around him, it doesn't necessarily have to be the subdivision, but adjacent and adjoining properties are zoned RA. So even though you're one of these six parcels, directly next door could operate in this manner. And I have, I take serious issues with trying to mitigate, if we decide to go forward with this, to try to further mitigate and say, we're going to let you have your rural agricultural zoning, but we're going to mitigate what you can do, and then people in the rest of the county have that same zoning, are going, they don't have any restrictions, so we're going to put restrictions on him specifically. I, I think it's wrong. I think if you have a right by the zoning and we approve it, he has the right by the zoning. I think we're overreaching when we start saying, you need to build walls. I mean, personally, I would rather look at an agricultural land that's growing a vineyard that builds natural landscape for soundproofing than a wall. This property is on the highway. I don't want to drive by and look at a whole wall, I want to see natural landscape. The, as far as concerns by the neighbors, since they're not here today, I would hope that they got the answers that they were looking for. Going into the future, yes, he could sell the property tomorrow if we grant this, and the next people could say, I want to hold events. They still have to provide adequate parking. Under the event process, we have rules and regulations that need to be followed. They don't get to make up what kind of event they're going to have, they don't get to make up that they're going to do parties at two in the morning. We have rules that get followed. I am for this project, I think it looks wonderful. I have driven by that property for twenty years, I have seen the progression of the agricultural, we are an agricultural county, so I am in full support of this project.
Amen.
So is there any other comments that anybody would like to make, or are we ready to address the resolution?
There are some issues with the resolution, but I think the planning director is going to deal with them.
Okay.
So yes, on the recommendation, it is recommended that you adopt the negative declaration and approve the zoning amendment, but that is, should be a recommendation of the board of supervisors to adopt, your advisory body on this, on this action. So both negative declaration and the board would take final action. So I would suggest, be it therefore resolved, that we add, the planning commission recommends that the board of supervisors adopt the negative declaration and approve the zoning amendment. Any other changes?
And you'd make the same conforming change down in the resolution part? Be it therefore resolved?
Yes, that's actually where I was thinking, I didn't even look at the, but, but yes, both the, the title as well as the, the resolution itself.
Any other comments or edits to the resolution? I don't have any. Do you have any? Okay.
No.
You do? Okay. Would you like to read the resolution into the record as amended? Our recommendation is that the planning commission pass a motion to sign amended resolution 2017-044, recommending the board of supervisors adopt the negative declaration and approve zoning amendment 2016-1144. Thank you.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you, Madeline. Thank you, Mr. Locke.
May I quickly ask you a question, Director? It says 2017-044 on the actual resolution?
Yes, this is the forty-fourth resolution-
Okay, but the project was-
The project of 2016, but the resolution number is based on this calendar year.
Do you guys want to take a break, or do you want to just move into Richard's things here? Yes, it's going to be, okay, we're going to take a short break now, and then we will come back in about five to ten minutes, maybe, ten minutes?
Thirty seconds.
I have to run to my car.
Ten minutes.
Ten minutes. Okay, thank you. Peter, you want to make an announcement real quick?
So we've had a request by one of the appellant's who is last on the agenda, if they could be moved up an item, because I guess conflict with airline schedule or something. And it's really up to you if you want to do that. I understand from the attorney for the item before that, that they're okay with that, they just don't have theirs heard, but they're willing to just switch places with them, so it's really up to you. I don't know if you want to hear from the attorneys or not on that, but-
So we would be moving six into position four because five is being removed?
Right. And actually, as you know, there's the other item number four, but three has been continued to June eighth as well. So we have the zoning hearing, and then two appeals, and the request is to switch places on the appeals.
Okay, so I guess the question would be, is Mr. Moore okay with being, letting the other one go first?
He's okay.
Thank you. Do any of you have anything you'd like to say to that? Are you okay with moving the agenda item?
Okay with me.
It's not, is there an agreement, it's okay with me?
Okay.
Fine.
Okay, then we will be moving item six up to position four, and four down six.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, so now we will go to zoning amendment 2017-006 for Jed Richardson, and Scott, you're going to present that for us?
Yes.
All yours.
Thank you. Okay, as the commissioner already said, this is zoning amendment 2017-006 for Jed Richardson. This is to change from rural residential RR5 to residential agriculture. For the description of the property, he currently has a single-family dwelling vineyard and organic farm on the property, and he is not proposing any changes of use. He's not proposing any, any new facilities or new uses on the property, he just wants to get this more in line to what exists on the ground. The property is located on the corner of Cape City Road and Michael Road, just outside of Mountain Ranch, at 7653 Cape City Road, here in the aerial of the property. You can see there's two parcels there, those actually have been merged through a lotline adjustment to a single parcel, new APN is not yet been designed, so it's still showing as two in our system. Just that, is now twelve point eight five acres in size. The site, like I said before, single-family dwelling, vineyard, greenhouses utilized for organic farming, and attached garage and some other accessory structures are on site. The surrounding area is a mix of rural residential, residential agriculture, unclassified zoning, and agricultural preserve. Five of the seven adjacent parcels to the site are all zoned rural residential. Better idea of the zoning here, give idea of where the resource zones, the agricultural zoning are in the area. The residential agriculture zones are here, here, and here, and the ag preserve zone is directly to the west. So a little bit of background, this was covered in the last presentation, but rural residential tend to provide land for personal ranches and farming primarily for personal use, with the residence being the primary use. Residential agriculture tends to have equal emphasis on both residential and agricultural uses, and provide lands for small-scale and personal-scale ranching and farming. Our, the residential agriculture zone is compatible in all land use designations in the general plan, and like I said prior, his use of vineyard organic farm, it being commercial in nature, falls more in line with residential agriculture than rural residential, which is why it's requested for the zone change. Now, potential impacts for residential agriculture, as we discussed in the last presentation, some increased traffic is a possibility due to special events, on-farm, on-farm sales, roadside stands, tasting rooms, things of that nature. However, these things are mitigated to a degree if for, by nothing else, then the no off-site parking is permitted, especially on this property, if you go back to the aerial photo. I'm holding this back here, sorry. There really isn't much parking to speak of on this property. He's got his driveway and a little bit of, of parking room and a couple spots, but he just does not have much room for parking that would be required for a special event, any considerable size. Go back to where I was, which, which greatly limits any size and scale of any operation that he has. As I said before, he also has to observe county noise ordinance limits. As far as traffic is concerned as well, does have an approach on Cape City Road, Public Works, there's no additional requirements to improve that encouragement with the roadway. Cape City Road itself, it does serve numerous residences, agricultural operations in the area, and is the designated route to California Caverns. That gets a lot of traffic over there for no other reason than the summer tourists going to California, California Caverns. This is, or, street view of the front of his property, see the California Caverns sign right on the other side of the street from his property. That is his driveway and a garage right there in the background. We did a sequel initial study pursuant to sequel guidelines that was circulated, and we received one comment letter. That comment letter concerned increased traffic and general compact the area, which I just went over previously in my presentation. Those impacts were addressed in the initial study, and no new potential impacts were raised in that comment letter. So as a result, I recommend that you approve this zoning amendment.
Thank you. Is there any questions for Scott?
I have a question, really quick. On this application, it says that he was using this for vineyards and some, I remember-
Organic farming.
Organic farming. Is it true that this is a pot growth site, correct?
Oh, he does, a couple of those do have cannabis in them, but he also grows tomatoes and other vegetables as well. He does have organic vegetables on the property that he's been growing for quite a lot longer than the current cannabis, and-
But he does have a permit for-
He does have a permit for cannabis, yes.
You mentioned, you mentioned that rural agriculture is compatible with all land uses under the general plan, or something like that?
Yeah, as a, as a resource zone, it's compatible with all, all areas in the general plan.
You mean, do you mean you can have RA anywhere in the county, is that what you-
No, basically, yes, unless otherwise stated.
I just didn't understand.
That, that's the way the 1996 general plan establishes the consistency is basically RA zoning is compatible use in all land use designations.
Okay. Now, is there anything he's doing now that, that is inconsistent with RR zoning?
I wouldn't say it's inconsistent.
It's allowed.
It's allowed, but it'd be more, more compatible with the intent of RA.
Your May 23rd memo to us about the wetlands was a very welcome reassurance. Is that officially a part of the record?
Yes.
Yes.
The neighbor's concern seems to be that in part, special events that would be permitted under the rural agriculture. However, even under rural residential zoning, you can have special events-
With the use permit, yes.
If you get a permit. Could you describe that permit process, what, and, and the limitations that can be made on those permits?
Basically, limitations that you can make on those use permits are hours, parking, amplified sound. The basic things that are outlined, I don't have the code section in front of me at the moment, but we just mitigate any potential disturbance in the neighborhood. But like I said before, I don't see the possibility of having a large special limit on that property without some sort of off-site parking solution, which would have to be approved by the planning department if they did that, so we would have a review of what's going on if that just kind of happened.
With a, with rural agricultural zoning, and you get your twelve permitted uses a year without a use permit, if, if you had needed more parking than was provided on-site, would you have to submit a parking management plan or something to the county?
Yeah, off-site parking would have to be submitted to the planning department approved by us.
I have no further-
Any further admissions or questions?
No.
Okay, is the applicant here today?
I am.
Would you like to come up, please?
Sure.
Good morning.
Good morning, I'm Jed Richardson. I'd like to say that, thank you for considering this application. Give you a little bit of background, I moved to Calaveras County about fourteen years ago after a career as an engineer in the Bay Area, and- And I purchased this property actually in 1999 to develop as a vineyard. And after developing it as a vineyard, I built a house here in 2003 and moved to the property. It was formerly pasture land used for sheep grazing, and my immediate neighbors have small scale farms as well. My grapes are currently under contract to five wineries at Murphy's. And I currently serve as president of the Calaveras Wine Grape Alliance, which represents the wine industry in this county. The, I also grow organic vegetables, and I have organic certification from the state for the vegetables. I sell to sender's market and at local farmers markets. Let's see, I, the US Department of Agriculture gave me grants for greenhouses for local food production, and that's what they're used for, and that constitutes part of the property. And my purpose of rezoning is to better reflect what's actually there. When I came to the county, as Kevin did, you know, long ago, they said, "Well, I've got a plant of vineyard." They said, "Fine, you know, it's, you don't need to do anything with us." And so, that's what I did, but as the agricultural operation expanded over the years, I think it's important that it be rezoned to reflect the current use. And it also gives me the opportunity to have onsite sales if I wanted for the produce. You know, and potentially even in the future, although I don't have current plans, I could do a small scale winery as well. So, I don't have any plans for special events. The special events that would be allowed, you know, are also allowed, as we said, in RR zoning. And I don't really anticipate any of that type of use. You mentioned, oh, as far as noise, across the street is a trust factory, and they play music all day long, and so there's quite a bit of music and noise from that. They also have special events like the mud run, which happened recently in Mountain Ranch. You mentioned the cannabis, I'm not a cannabis farmer per se. I lease 6,000 square feet of my property to a cannabis farmer, and he's fully registered. The site was the first one inspected by the county, and my tenant farmer has received full registration. Any questions for me?
As far as allowing for future agricultural uses, you've mentioned possible onsite sales and possibly a small winery. What other, what other opportunities do you foresee for this in agricultural?
So, the, it's primarily, you know, the onsite sales and the greenhouses, you know, I can expand and do additional vegetable sales, you know, starts and that type of thing. And so, it's, it allows me to expand the organic business, which I think is getting more and more traction in the county. And more and more people are looking for organic vegetables. And I sell at the farmer's market, the master gardener's location, and I'm the only organic farmer there, so.
And this would be all during the daytime, these sales?
Oh, yes, of course, yeah, yeah. I live on the property, so obviously, I don't want people draping in all hours. Thank you.
Sure.
No other questions?
Well, a quick question. I've seen a letter from your neighbor, Rolanda, I'm not quite sure how to pronounce her name. She mentions business, and this is a lot more businesses. Do you know what she's talking about?
I don't, actually, I've never actually met this neighbor. I guess I need to, but she's not an immediate neighbor. I don't know if she's talking about maybe potential future businesses that could go on the site agriculturally related. Her home is about two doors down on Cave City, I'm on the corner. So, any potential additional traffic wouldn't necessarily impact her since it would stop before they get to her property.
Okay. Great, can we take public comment on this one, please? Anybody here that wants to speak to this? Okay. Any further? No?
Again, just would like to point out a correction, two corrections to the resolution. In the title, it should be a resolution recommending adoption of the negative declaration and approval of a zoning amendment. The rest is the same, and then down under the resolution itself, therefore resolved that the planning commission recommends the board of supervisors adopt the negative declaration and approve the zoning amendment.
There were a couple of other changes that may have found their way in under zoning amendment findings, number one. The last two words, public service, should be residential agriculture.
duly noted.
And you already got the other one under the evidence? Where it says, "The residential agriculture zone district is designated as a zone consistent in all land use designations in the general plan, the "in" should be with.
Okay, thank you. Any further amendments to this, are we good to go?
That's it.
Okay. Want to read it for us?
All right, I recommend that the commissioner pass a motion to sign Resolution 2017-046 as amended, recommending the board of supervisors to adopt the initial study and negative declaration and approve zoning amendment 2017-006.
Thank you. Can we get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries my vote, thank you. Okay. So, item number three is going to be continued to June 8th, so we won't be having that hearing today. We are switching item number six for four, so we're going to be hearing 2016-671.
Yes.
Okay, would you like to make the introduction?
Yes, first of all, I would like to introduce Ben Diamond. He was hired as extra help to help process all of the cannabis registrations as an office technician. He has done such a great job, we promoted him to planner trainee, and this is his first opportunity to present to you, so.
Great, thank you, welcome. We'd like you to speak into the mic.
He's not shy about that.
All right, I like it, go ahead.
All right, good morning. Now, we have the appeal of Julie Elola, appealing the denial of medical cannabis cultivation registration application 2016-671 by the planning. First off, this parcel is located at 12139 Grandy Lane in Person. It is a 5.11 acre parcel, and the registration was for outdoor and 22,000 square feet of total cannabis area. This application was denied for failing to meet the posting standards pursuant to Section 17.95.165i and failing to meet the fencing standards pursuant to 17.95.165n. And now, to give these reasons for denial a little bit better context, I would like to invite code enforcement to present their findings from the site inspections and the contacts that they have with the applicant and the associated parties.
While Caroline's walking up, I'd just like to clarify that Julie Elola is representing the corporation. Jay's not here, who's the applicant and the appellant on this, but she's the individual representing the corporation.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Caroline Moat with Code Compliance. We went, we went out and did an inspection on this property. Looks like my date is on the 12th of January. The time that we set up the appointment, I had been in contact with Jason Terramoto, who was going to meet us at the property. And we talked the day before we went out for the inspection. So, we went out on the 12th, and Jason was not there. We were shown around the site by a man named Angel. He gave us kind of the tour of the facility. There were two adjoining properties at that time that they were growing on both, so we did two inspections in that day. We had issues with where some of the plants were planted. They were planted within the setbacks of the other property. There was no fencing up, they had the field fencing around the edges of the property. The grow itself was not fenced. There were tee posts, and there was fencing material present, but it wasn't in place. The permit posting was not up. And then, there were other issues on that property with, that were a code case. There were issues with camping. And I think a well that hadn't been permitted, the code issues have been taken care of. But it went forward, I had to, I didn't meet Jason Terramoto that day, he never came out to the property. I met him, seems like a week or so later, I sent out corrections to Julie Elola at several different addresses, and got in contact with Jason. I think I met him on the 30th when Jason Terramoto and Jason Elola came into the office to go over the correction list with me. I gave him all of the corrections that I told you about. We were in contact back and forth. I got a letter from Jason, an email from Jason stating the corrections, the fencing corrections would be made by the 17th of February. And there was some communication back and forth, but the corrections were never made. There was, he did send me a picture of the posting, the permit, that wasn't correct, so we went back and forth about that. I actually recommended them for denial on the 22nd of February, because at this point, it had been over a month, and it hadn't, nothing had been completed. And at that time, the individual in planning who was handling it asked me if I would go back out to the property and inspect it one last time. And so, I called Jason Terramoto and made arrangements to go back out on the 31st, and actually, I think I emailed him. And I said, "Okay, this is, we're going to be out on the 31st, everything needs to be done, everything needs to be taken care of." "No problem," he said, "that's, that's fine." We went out on the 31st, the fencing was still incomplete, it was about 80% up. The fence, the gate itself was being built, and the fencing material had been rolled back. So, there was probably about 20 feet of area that was not fenced. The permit was posted incorrectly, it didn't have the reflective material that is required in the instructions. And at that time, I, the people that were out there, I talked to, Jason Elola was out there at the time, and I spoke with him briefly about the posting itself. And he said, "The gate will be finished." And we concluded our inspection and went home, or came back to the office, and I contacted planning and let them know what my findings were, that the fencing was still incomplete, the posting was incorrect, and that was kind of where it laid from my perspective.
When you said the fencing was rolled back, was that rolled back as a part of the installation of the gate?
It may have been, I don't know. There was never a point at which anybody emailed me or sent me pictures to say that the fence is complete. I know when I went out there that day, it was Jason Elola's dad was installing the gate, and Jason explained that his dad didn't think the gate was sufficient. And so, he was making it sturdier, but I never saw any evidence of completed fencing.
And when you made the various visits to the property, how muddy was the land?
It was extremely muddy in the beginning. When we went out in January, it was very muddy, and that was one of the things that Jason and I were kind of emailing back and forth. The tee posts were already in the ground, but for moving the big pots, the big smart pots out of the setbacks, that wasn't going to be possible. They still had a trailer down in the lower area that they couldn't move out until the ground solidified. The fencing, I believe the fencing could have been put in place. Like I said, the tee posts were already there, they had the rolls of material. But the smart pots and the trailer certainly couldn't be moved until that ground formed up.
And just during this whole time, why there was no active growth of cannabis?
No, not at the site.
January through March?
Yeah, and it was all harvested.
And as far as the notice goes, they put some metal on two sides of the notice?
Yeah, there was like an aluminum framing around, around the posting, which is shiny, but I don't know that I would, I think of it as reflective. There's actual reflective tape that is used. And they, and they actually did, after I spoke with Jason Elola on, when we went back out for the re-inspect, and I told him about the reflective material, they went out then and got reflective tape and then taped around the permit at that point.
And the ordinance itself doesn't specify what reflective means, does it? Other than so that it would make it possible for law enforcement to see it at night with a flashlight?
Right.
I'd assume nobody went out at night with a flashlight to see how reflective this metal was? Thank you.
Is there code that specifies what that reflective has to be, or is it anything reflective? Is there specifics about that?
I don't believe so, I think that the verbiage just says that it needs to be reflective material.
On the fencing, when you went out on the 31st of March, was it your opinion that it was 20% incomplete?
Yes.
The tee posts were there, but 20% of the wire was not up?
Between the wiring that wasn't complete and the gate.
And about how many feet of fence would that be that was not up?
20 feet, maybe, 30 feet?
I take it it's just, it's kind of a, at the discretion of the code compliance officer, when you finally decide enough is enough?
It is, and we, we've gotten, as this process has gone on, we've gotten clearer with the deadlines. I, at the time I wrote the correction list, and I gave it to them on the 30th, I actually physically gave it to Jason Terramoto and Jason Elola. And we discussed it, then, at that point, there, Jason Terramoto's plan was to devise a plan of action and contact me when they could figure out kind of what, what they had decided would be a reasonable timeframe. And then, he emailed me somewhere in here, he emailed me, I think on, that he would be done with the fencing and the posting on 217, on February 17th. And that didn't, didn't happen. We were having a lot of rain. So, I think, I think the mud was certainly a consideration for moving the smart pots and taking care of getting the trailer out of there, but...
So, you gave him an additional six weeks?
Yeah. And I, like I said, I originally recommended for denial on February 22nd. After that, after that 217 date had come and gone, and on the 22nd, that it wasn't, there had been... And on the 22nd, that it wasn't, there had been, I have several emails and, and a, a list of the communications. And it had been kind of an ongoing process.
Was there cannabis grown at this site prior to May 10th of last year?
From aerial imagery, it appears that cannabis cultivation began around July 2015.
I see reference to a March 31 date, another meeting. Did you extend the timeout to March 31st?
That, that was the, after I got in, I was in communication with Miguel, who asked me, because I had sent him the recommendation for denial on the 22nd. And at that point, I kind of thought I was done with it. Jason had emailed me a few more times and I referred him to the planning department and said, I forwarded your case over to the planning department. And then I, Miguel and I spoke and he asked if I would go out and do a, one more final inspection to see if they had completed everything.
And is that when you found the gate was still not in?
And that was, right.
Not the prior time? Because this, last time it still was not in?
Right.
Jason's letter says differently. He says the fencing was 100% complete prior to March 31st.
I never received any evidence of that being the case. He had no time contacted me to say that the fencing is complete. So that's, I, I never saw complete fencing out there.
You were there the last time, is that date was March?
31st.
31st.
Is Jason the, the property manager? Because is, is he, he's not an applicant. Jason is who?
He's not an applicant. He, as best I can tell, represents Julie Elola, Elola and Jason Elola. And I attempted on a couple of occasions to get written permission from Julie Elola to interact with Jason on her behalf. I got a verbal approval. I never got written approval from her.
Is there any further questions for Carolyn?
No, at this time.
Thank you for the moment. Okay, do you have anything further you want to present?
I do.
Okay.
So I'll just get into the specific violations that caused our denial and just kind of a summary of what Carolyn just described. So on January 12th, the initial compliance inspection that was conducted by code enforcement, it was found that the application pending certificate was not posted at the site. And per the letter from Mr. Terramoto on January 30th, it was claimed that it was put in the break room due to storms, which means that it was both not adequately weatherproof and was also removed from, from the site that it was meant to be posted at. And then on the March 31st follow-up inspection, the application pending certificate was still not properly posted. And here we see a picture from the March 31st follow-up inspection, which shows the application pending certificate surrounded by what are commonly referred to as tie plates. These are usually made from sheet metal steel and are no more really conspicuous than any other exposed metal that would be around them. As example by the hinge right next to it, would be somewhat unmistakable from the tie plates themselves. So an inspecting officer at night could just mistake it for a extension of the gate or fence. And this being Calaveras County, we tend to have metal around our properties occasionally. So just having pieces of sheet metal around the permit would not make it sufficiently visible for an enforcement official to locate at night.
Now, if there had been reflective tape around as of March 31st, the notice would not be a part of this denial?
Correct.
Is that the gate?
That is the gate. And as you can see, there is no fencing attached to it on March 31st. It's part of the gap in fence.
Sorry to interrupt, but you had stated that the posting on March 31st was inside of a building and not up for inspection?
On January 12th,
Okay.
the initial inspection. And in the response letter from Mr. Terramoto, that was on the January 30th, he claimed that the posting was in a break room due to...
Okay, I had thought you said March 31st. So, good.
And the fencing on January 12th, the cultivation areas were completely un-fenced. The T-posts were up, but there was no fencing attached to them as well. There were two additional cultivation areas that were also not fenced and it did not appear that there were any T-posts around them. So it is likely that they were never fenced. And then on the March 31st follow-up inspection, the fencing around the main cultivation area was still incomplete. Here is a aerial image of the subject parcel. The large cultivation area down there is the area that was registered for. You can see some of it was within the setbacks, as were the two smaller cultivation areas that were un-fenced. And this is just to give you kind of a context of where they are on property.
How accurate can we assume the, the red line is? It's, it's in the road out there.
In this case, I'd say they're fairly accurate. There is likely some, you know, stretching occurring, but due to the inspections and interaction with the parties on the parcel, it was clear that at least part of those smaller cultivation areas were within setbacks. And here we see a picture of the main cultivation area from the January 12th compliance inspection. You can see the T-posts are up. And in the cultivation area is a rolled up segment of fencing. And here are the smaller cultivation areas. As it said, there are no T-posts around them. So it is hard to say if they were ever fenced. And you can see significant erosion from our extremely wet winter around them. And on the follow-up inspection on March 31st, this is a picture of the fencing that was rolled up for installation of the gate on one side of it for the main cultivation area. And again, the posting picture shows the other side of the gate where the fencing is also not attached, which supports the gap in the fence that Officer Mo observed during the follow-up inspection.
Excuse me, I don't quite understand the pre, the next previous picture, that one. Where, where is the gate in relation to what we're seeing there?
I believe it is to the left.
Is there fence, so we're seeing rolled up fencing before the first T-post that we see? Then apparently there is fencing continuing down that line.
Yes, there was a gap from this to the gate and then from the other side of the gate to another point where the fencing icing was rolled up as well. And just to summarize, on January 12th, Code Compliance, or Code Enforcement, conducted a compliance inspection. Several violations of county code were observed, including a active code case that was opened because of them, although those seem to have been remedied. And then there were two small rows within the setbacks that were also not fenced. The main cultivation area was not fenced and the permit was not posted. A correction list was mailed to the appellant on January 20th and also hand-delivered to Mr. Terramoto, the landowner, and Mr. Elola on the 30th when they met with code enforcement. And then on March 31st, 2017, a follow-up inspection was conducted by code enforcement and it was found that the fencing was still incomplete and the permit was not properly posted.
I'm Ethan Turner, Deputy County Counsel. I have a few follow-up comments to conclude the defense presentation. This case is similar to, to a long line of cases that's come before this commission, beginning at least with Balaamane, it was heard on December 8th. During that case, this commission articulated a rule stating that adequate security measures and other requirements of the code really needed to have been in place as of June 30th. However, the planning director had discretion where code finds minor non-compliant issues to allow them to fix it. In this case, they had two months and, and failed to do so. Then what they missed, missed the initial deadline of having their site ready and compliant as of the application date. Almost three quarters of a year later, it wasn't ready. And they were given two more months and were unable to complete it. I'll also point out that in the case, that rule has gone before the board and those cases were also denied by the board. So if this commission were to grant this appeal, it'd be reversing prior precedent set by this commission and upheld by the board.
Thank you. Okay, are there any questions any further? Anyone want to hear from the appellant? Okay, is the appellant here or representative?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you for giving us an opportunity to be heard today on this appeal matter. We'd also want to send our appreciation to the staff. We generally have had a very good working relationship with them. And we think they've been courteous and professional in our dealings. And we think that they have a tough job and they've worked hard at trying to do the best they can under the rules they have. But as some of the questions have pointed out, the rules are not exactly perfectly clear. And we have a couple of issues here that, really this comes down to March 31st. We were never told that we were denied until after March 31st. And that was the last inspection that we've all been talking about. And there's two issues only in front of this board, which is whether or not we had inadequate posting and whether or not our fencing was complete. And we agree with that, that that is the correct framing of the issues that we have here today. And, and what we have is the, the, on March 31st, the fencing was complete. What we were, what the applicant was doing at that moment was that they were trying to improve the gate. On the gate, it's not required that you have a sturdy gate or that it has a wooden frame. You're not required that it can easily open so that emergency vehicles can get in there. But that's what they were trying to do, is have a, a gate that worked better. And the gate had been built. It was on site. It was in position. In order to attach it firmly, they temporarily moved the fencing that was attached to the gate to the side. This was communicated to the inspector at the time. The inspector seemed to have no issue with it. And it was completed within that day. It was completed and operated. We were never told that we were required to send pictures of that, that attachment. We would have done it. It would have been simple to do. We had them. It was, it would have been extremely easy to accomplish. Now, as far as the reflective material around the posting, it's, it's, I mean, you can clearly tell the only reason the applicant would have put that on the posting is because they thought it was reflective. And there is not a lot of reflective material on site. They actually, I think they have found the two reflective pieces of material, which were right next to each other, which is the hinge on the gate and the posting, which are literally right next to each other. The rest of the bob wire is dull, a dull finish. It is not reflective. If you went out there with a flashlight, you could clearly find, find this posting. Although, when they were told that, hey, this is inadequate reflective material, we immediately, the applicant immediately, immediately put reflective material on it that day. So it's, you know, what is clear is that you heard that the inspector wanted to shut this place down prior to this inspection. They told you that. We were never told that. The applicant was never told that. But that was their understanding. They wanted to shut this site down for failure to comply earlier with requirements. But they were not granted that, that internally, they were not granted the same, confirmation of that opinion. And they were told to go back and re-inspect. And that's what the applicant was operating under. And that's what the applicant did. I mean, it was, I mean, under the, the presentations, you heard, everything was completed. Two issues, the posting and the fence. You have all the information in front of you. You have the pictures of the completion from, from us on there. So the question is, is that, i- is this, were they in compliance at that time? And, and it's very likely, I have looked at the previous appeals that have occurred here. This is not analogous to the others. This is different because there is a very strong argument that they were in completion on March 31st. And if they were in completion on March 31st, a court will find that this was a valid compliance. So the question is, is that we're at this point, are we going to? There's no argument that they're in compliance now. The only argument you have is that they're not sure if they were in compliance on March 31st or not. They know at the time of the inspection, there was some rolled back fencing and the reflective material, in their opinion, was not adequate. That's what we're arguing about. And, and, and that's really the question that you're here to answer. Is that, is that, is that something that should, should turn into, you know, a more complicated scenario than, than, than what it is? And it isn't. I mean, they were in compliance. If there's any questions you have about that, we're more than happy to answer or address any questions that you have.
Well, on March 31st, they knew the inspector was coming, correct?
Correct.
And things weren't put together?
Actually, this is what's so ironic. Is that, it was, but someone had the bright idea of making a more sturdy fence than what was, than was operative. They wanted to impress that they had a fancy fence, even though it wasn't required by the code to make it operate smoothly and allow emergency vehicles to have access to this property very easily. Not required, should be, should be required, but wasn't. They went over and above. That's all that has occurred here. Everything was obviously there in place, or you would have heard otherwise.
Well, it was, it wasn't all together when the inspector arrived. And it's a couple of months after all this started.
Well, I would argue though, it was really detached. What they, what they, what it was occurred was that they were making a modification while the inspector was present.
And?
And it wasn't a bright idea, and I, and I understand. And I understand the frustration of the staff. I mean, they, that's a very complicated job they have to do. They're running all over the county trying to make sure everybody's compliant. They don't have time to, to treat everybody special. But this is one of those situations where you really look at it. I mean, there were, maybe it wasn't the best reflective material, but you know that's why it was there. I mean, there's no argument you can make with a straight face that that metal was not put on that sign because they thought they were putting reflective material on it. It was more complicated to put that metal on it than to put the alternative.
So before March 31st, your client had no indication from Code Compliance that they were recommending a denial?
Never. 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 And you got to understand, there's a significant investment. I mean, what really complicated the, the period of time that occurred was the weather. I mean, there was substantial issues going on, not just at this property, everywhere, of significant amount, amount of rain. And the issues that they were actually focusing on were the stuff that was more complicated by the weather, removing of certain structures and so forth. And, and that was really restrained by the weather. This was relatively simple, minor stuff that, that didn't appear to be, so most of their attention during the weather issues was trying to deal with the stuff that was complicated by the weather.
It's not so simple when it's a requirement in the, in the ordinance and was supposed, the fencing was supposed to be in there before the rains ever started. So it, it gets down to a question of the resources of the county and how many times are they going to go out there?
Yeah, I understand that, but it was literally, I mean, the fence was completed. It was up. It was done. There was a temporary detachment of wire to that. A reflective material was on the sign. This, this was not someone that was ignoring the reality that the inspection was occurring. I mean, yeah, if I would have been called, I would have said, don't touch the gate. Leave it the way it is. Deal with it when they're gone. That's what my advice would have been. That's what my advice would have been. But they were actually trying to be better performed than underperformed. And it was a mistake, I mean, that part of it. But it was not, it was, the fencing was there and it was installed. It was, it was, there was an improvement that was going on to the gate and, which is shows in the pictures and which they, which you were told by the compliance officer.
You were told what?
You were told by the compliance officer that the gate was there, that it was, that the issue was that there was a rollback essentially of the material. And that, and the reason why it was, the rollback was right next to the gate is because they were, you know, they were improving the gate at the moment.
You've told us a couple of times this morning that they were not told that the compliance people were going to recommend denial prior to the 31st. I heard you say that twice. And there's an email dated March 28th from Ms. Moate to Jason. I've been in contact. We agree, we've had plenty of time, we've given you plenty of time. I would like to come out on Friday and verify that the fencing has been completed, that the posting is corrected and the trailer removed. If, if this hasn't been accomplished and completed by Friday, I'll pass you on to planning with a recommendation for denial.
Yeah, but they never did that. They never told them that that's what they were going to do.
That's in writing.
No, what I'm saying is that when that event occurred, that recommendation was not, they were never said, we recommend now that you be denied. That was, that never occurred. They were, they were in threat of it, but it never actually occurred. This is Jason that you've heard referenced.
She had also made reference to the February 22nd date where she had suggested to planning that we be denied. We were never notified of that. The first that we heard of that date was actually when she was giving her testimony, was here this morning.
Let me ask you a different question. On June 30th, these things were supposed to be done?
Correct.
And March is 10 months later. So you don't have any issue with the fact for 10 months, a complete grow was done last summer? No fencing from Children's Protections following the regulation? And it's okay to wait until January, February and March to come into compliance because a code inspector didn't show up? When does it become the responsibility of our county to have to send a code inspector three times versus following regulation and doing what's supposed to be done back in June and July?
They're in communication with the, with the applicant and the staff. So there was, there was a communication of what was occurring and what wasn't. It wasn't like they weren't telling him exactly what they were doing and what was going on. There was a complication because of the weather, that, that the significant events that were occurring was weather-driven related to removing stuff off the property. And that was what the, what the majority of the conversations were about. And there was some appeasement from staff saying, okay, we understand. And so that, that communication was ongoing. So it wasn't like there was just, there was no planting going on during that period of time. It was, it was, there were-
There was all of last summer.
Yeah, but that was-
And it was dry.
That's correct.
And that's when you were supposed to be in compliance, not January, February, March. I would say code compliance was rather generous by working with you and then coming out and finding it 80% fenced, not fully compliant, costing the code department having to come out a second time to certify. At what point do you not expect to be told you're being denied? I guess that's where I'm struggling. Because you're throwing dates at me and you're making accusations that I haven't been told. But I'm looking at emails between Mrs. Moate and Mr. Teramoto, I hope I said that correctly, that acknowledge this process. So I'm having a hard time buying that you're saying, we didn't do our job in the county by not properly notifying when I'm reading it right in front of me.
I, it was never, there was never a situation said that no one wasn't doing their job. What I would say is that the, when I started the conversation, I said, there's two issues. The fencing and the reflective sign.
Correct.
That's what the denial is based on. Actually, I have a presentation that I had prepared relating to the history of the property that is unrelated to these two issues. If you'd like to, because if we're going to go into the history of the growing and all the circumstances surrounding that, it's far more complicated than what's being presented today. And if, we weren't told that those were issues, but I'm more than happy to present on that if you'd like to continue.
There's two issues before us today.
Right.
The signage was not put up properly.
Correct.
Weatherproof with reflective lighting.
Right.
The second issue is the fencing wasn't completed. Those are the two issues we're discussing today. Thank you.
Okay, I agree. So that's why, I mean, I feel like I should have maybe had those materials here if they're, if they're relevant to your decision. But as far as those two issues, reflective material was on the sign. You have a picture. There's no, I mean, it reflects.
I, I'm looking at the picture and it looks like stainless or galvanized steel to me. It doesn't look like reflective.
It's polished, though. It's not dull. It reflects.
But it does, okay, so if I'm looking at it and I go to the hardware store and I tell the guy working there, I need something reflective, is he going to hand me a piece of galvanized steel or is he going to walk me over and say, this is what's reflective? I'm sitting here reading the requirement and it specifically states reflective, not shiny. So I guess that's where-
It reflects. It reflects well. It really does. But we took the advice of the staff and immediately put another material if they didn't like it. But our objective on putting that up was because we thought it reflect. That's why it was put there. It was not put there for any other reason. So, and, and I agree that, that, you know, if staff thinks that we should do something different, we should follow that. And that's what we did. We sent a picture showing the material that they recommended, that we put that on.
Excuse me, can you state your name, please?
Alan Sawyer.
I've got a few questions.
Sure.
When did your client obtain the application pending certificate? As you submitted the application, June 29th, 2016.
I want to say it was mid-July.
Mid-July is his best-
On the inspection on January 12th of 2017, was that certificate posted at all?
No, and the reason why is because of the implement letter that we're all familiar with. It was put, it was put into the trailer to protect-
Can you speak into the mic, please?
Sorry. It was put into the trailer, as is noted by Officer Moate, to protect it. And there, and I also want to make very clear that, you know, it was on the property prior to the rain starting. But because there was no cultivation going on at the time, we felt that we could just post it in, in the trailer with all the other documentation necessary.
Was that certificate weatherproofed at that time?
Well, yes, but not for that type of weather. I mean, it was put into, you know, those acrylic sheet holders, but there was no sealing. I mean, we, to say that it was weatherproofed, yes, but no. I mean, it was, it was put in plastic, but there was, if we had it still posted, it would have been soaking wet.
Well, then it wasn't sufficiently weatherproofed for the storms that we had in January?
Correct.
But you understand the ordinance requires that it be weatherproofed.
Correct.
And if it had been weatherproofed properly, it would have been posted outside, correct?
Correct. But we also, you know, when we-
And by March 31st, we did that. On the, the inspection, we worked up to a new inspection date with staff. We, we took their immediate advice and did that. Prior to March 31st, we had that up there, yes.
Property weatherproofed or in the same reflective or in the same sheet?
Properly, properly weatherproofed. But what we did is we, properly weatherproofed. And no one's saying that it wasn't properly weathered at this point. It's the reflective issue, whether or not our reflective material was adequate.
There's a February 26th, 2017 email from Mr. Teramoto with a photo that says that the application pending certificate was posted on a temporary permit structure. Is that correct?
Yes.
Why, why was it temporary at that point instead of something permanent?
Like the addition of the wooden fence, we had actually ordered a wooden frame, much like you would see at Big Trees Park, where you can clearly have the posted, you know, the posting not only be weatherproofed, not only easily found, but, you know, almost kind of like a landmark on that particular property. So that's, I mean, when I say temporary, I mean, I don't mean that it was not going to, you know, withstand the entire next harvest season. What I, what I meant by temporary was we had already looked at something much more permanent, much more significant.
Are there any-
Yeah, I've got more.
Okay.
As of January 12th, 2017, was there any fencing completed around any of these grows on this property?
Yes. Yeah. And, and one thing, you know, during the January 30th meeting, one of the people that was present was Mr. Brad White. So we had talked to Caroline at that meeting, you know, we're notified of all the different improvements and all the different things that we needed to do to that property to come into compliance. You know, we, we made the commitment right there on the spot to do those. So, you know, again, going back to, you know, Madam Chair's previous assertion that we had had six months, code compliance came out, noted what was out of compliance, told us, you know, what we needed to do to come into compliance. We sat down on January 30th and then started to put into action how to, how to address all those issues. So it's, it's not so much a matter of six months coming into, coming into compliance. I mean, we've been involved in this issue pretty much before the urgency ordinance was even put in place. You know, we're involved in it elsewhere. But at the end of the day, you know, once we were told what we needed to do, we built an action plan, set a budget and started to do it. We can't control the weather. And if you'd seen some of the pictures from the property prior to that meeting, you would have seen a 20,000 pound trailer that we had to haul up. And that, the pictures that you're seeing don't give justice to how steep that hill is. There was zero traction. So, you know, and the pots are about 2,500 pounds to 3,500 pounds. That's not even including soaking wet. So you can imagine how difficult it is. Once we got the heavy equipment in there, once the property dried out, we did it. You know, we didn't wait. But we, there were some periods in there where we were actively communicating with code compliance to say, this is what has been done so far. Here's what we can't do because of the weather. And I think because we were all experiencing it at the same time, they were more than understanding.
Well, as of the 12th of January, though, what fencing was actually complete around the grows?
The fencing, the completed fencing, as you can see in those photos, you saw where the T-posts were.
But there's no wires on them.
There's no wire.
Well, this is 2016. This is not 2017. This is a year prior. I don't know, you know, I wasn't even involved with the project at the time.
That should be 2017.
It's 2017. There's no wires up in that photo.
No, but, but along the backside where we had some, we were going to, we actually have a grading permit that we had pulled. We didn't submit it. But what we were going to do is take a lot of this and start terracing it out. We'd actually had that conversation with Carrie also. And in some of those emails that you have in your packets, it's, it's, it's asking her, excuse me, where we're at in the process so that we can start to go to planning about the terracing. But there was fencing along the backside. When we came out, or when code compliance came out on the 30th, the entire, that entire area was completely fenced in. And then the subsequent emails after the fact were in regards to the setback. Because Caroline had mentioned to, to of our representatives that were on the property at the time, you know, because of the setbacks, you guys may have to delete some of the pots off of your, off of your 2017 harvest plan. So we were asking for clarification.
The setbacks are an issue here, are they?
No, they're not. But the, I mean, when we're talking about the fencing, you know, as far as those posts are concerned, that's where all the fencing was on the day that they came out for the final inspection.
In an email on the 30th of January of 2017, you said you had, you expected the fencing to be complete by February 17th.
Correct.
Was it?
No, because we had a huge storm those three weeks prior.
Okay, now I keep hearing about this weather complicating factors. And I, I have to tell you, I put up a little fence in my time. You can do it by hand. You can pound T-post by hand. You can unroll wire by hand. Now, the weather may have complicated other things that you had to do involving heavy equipment, but this is not one of them. Do you agree with that?
No, I absolutely agree.
And the same thing is true with the posting. You don't need heavy equipment to post.
And it was posted. I mean, the one, we had it, on March 31st, it was posted. The reflective material was around it. All the fencing was up. All that was occurring was a, which was testified to by the inspector was we were strengthening the gate.
You mentioned that you have experiences with the urgency ordinance with respect to other sites. Is that correct?
Other, when I say other sites, I mean other counties.
Other counties.
The reason that I was actually not there for the date of the inspection is because both my wife and I had gotten called down to San Diego to participate in the cannabis manufacturers conference. And that, that, I mean, it came up about two days prior to me receiving the email from Mrs. Moate that they were going to be on the site to inspect. And now, I want to make it also, I want to make another point. She, she set that calendar. We didn't. And we said, fine, we'd love to have you out there. We're ready to go. We didn't delay it. We didn't try to postpone it. We were, you know, as far as we were concerned, we were completely in compliance and had met all the, all the specifications that she had set forth in the January 30th meeting.
And then the bright idea of strengthening the fence, which wasn't the brightest idea to make a more accessible fence.
Well, what, what was the reason why?
A gate, I meant, I'm sorry.
What was the reason why this fencing, if not completed by June 30th, 2016, wasn't done in any of the months in the remainder of that year? It wasn't complete for at least the first month of this year? I mean, why the delay?
Part of its budget. Sorry, part of it is budget.
Part of its what?
Budget.
Not enough money?
Correct.
Madam Chair, I'd like the commission not to lose sight of the fact that Mr. Teramoto is not the applicant. I'm not sure why he's talking.
Because his legal, her legal representative is using him as a speaker on her behalf.
So, but, just for clarity, you're their representative as their attorney?
Yes.
He is a witness?
An employee. He is, he works and consults for Ms. Iola.
Okay, is there a letter in the file, him being represented as a-
I submitted a file, a letter as her representative when I noticed the appeal that I am. So, I mean, it's clear that I'm her legal representative and I'm calling Mr.-
Can I just ask a question, clarify legally? My understanding is Jay's not here incorporated as the applicant, is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, Julie Iola is, how is she related to the corporation?
She is an officer.
Okay. And so why, so she's just operating right now as an agent of the corporation, correct?
I said officer.
Yes, so she, okay, but she's one representative of the corporation. So then she herself personally has a separate agent?
I'm sorry?
So Ms. Iola is an individual, has a separate agent, Mr. Teramoto? Or is Mr. Teramoto-
I am her legal representative here.
Okay, so Mr. Teramoto is-
I'm asking him because he is a witness
Okay.
to information that occurred throughout this process.
But we're in agreement, Ms. Iola is not the person, is not the applicant of the corporation.
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to clarify.
Yeah.
The, the gate that you were, your client was improving on March 31st, can you tell me how that gate's constructed? Is there a post on each side of it? And it hinges on one side and then hooks onto something on a post on the other side?
Wood frame. It's a wood frame. It has a post to support the hinges and then the wire attaches to the post.
Okay.
So it's a-
Tell me why it was necessary to take the fence, to remove the fence from the post that was previously attached to
Because-
in order to put the gate in, because the gate's going to fit in the gap between the two posts, right?
Correct, because these were more, they had to install a more significant post to hold the weight of the gate. So, so that, that was why they did it.
So you had to pull out the original-
Correct.
Other post? Okay, now was the replacement post in the ground on March 31st?
Yes.
Were they in the ground when the inspector came by?
I believe so, yes.
Can I ask, there's a couple of photographs, I believe you guys sent them in.
Correct.
And to show the actual wood frame
Yes.
gate.
And she referenced, the inspector referenced it in her comments.
And was that gate, is that the way it looked on the 31st?
Yes.
But not installed?
Well, it was partially installed. It was-
What does that mean?
Well, meaning the posts were in place, the gate was being attached at that point.
Where was it physically?
It was right on, right next to the post. It was literally in process while the inspector was there. So, I mean, I don't want to say how far along it was, but it was right.
And it looked like-
That day it was done.
The, the structure, the struts were in place?
Yes.
The cross braces were in?
Yes.
The second area, the, the, can you bring up the grow site, please? The area that's not shown on the plot map, the two smaller-
The area that's not shown on the plot map, the two smaller grows? I'm looking at the photos of that area, and I didn't see any stakes or posts or fencing around it in any of these photos. Did you eradicate that, or did that become part of your fencing?
Well, when, there was no fencing around that, because frankly, if you look at the way, the condition those pots are in right now, those were actually not even being actively used for cultivation. Those were pots that did not fit into the original cultivation plan.
Okay.
So they were just put off to the side.
Okay, so there's no growing around in, or, okay.
No, they were, I mean, we also invested, I mean, when we talk about how much money we put into these properties in Calaveras, you know, the amount of soil that went into just this site was about $150,000. So it made more sense for us to keep all of the soil where it was and keep them in those pots rather than having them integrate into the existing native soil. You know, it doesn't, it doesn't work for cultivation. I don't know how many other cultivators you've heard of on that.
Was this cultivation ever in a hoop house situation?
There was another A P N on the other side, but that's since been, that's, that's, that's the lease that we're no longer holding.
'Cause I'm looking at your photos, I see the post stakes, I see plastic on the ground, and it looks like maybe some PVC piping.
Yep.
As if though it was a hoop house.
That was part of a different grow.
Okay, so what are the photos here for?
Those photos were to document how much damage that storm the prior weekend had done to, to that property. Just to give Carrie and the rest of the, the rest of the officers some idea as to what kind of, you know, as to the severity, as to how far these two properties were hit. But since that picture and since that email, that, that lease has expired.
Is there any further questions, or would you like to hear from the public now, and then we'll, we'll come back for rebuttal to both parties? Okay, all right, so we go to public comment, and then obviously if there's anything you need to rebuttal, we'll let you come back. Does anybody from the public have anything they would like to say on this agenda item? Would you like to speak publicly on this item?
Hi, my name's Larry, and?
Larry, can you, do you mind stating your name for a net?
Oh, I'm Larry Robbins. Two Bs. And I've lived up off Brandy Lane there for 30 years with my family. And, um, things really changed when the pot farm came in. The few things that we're discussing here, gosh, guys, that's a drop in the bucket. If, if I can speak freely here, a couple of examples. One day I'm coming home from work, and I see there's a, a couple of campers are camping by the side of the road next to an outhouse, and you know, a dilapidated motorhome there, and one guy decides he's gonna change the oil in the, in the generator in the motorhome. Well, there's no drain pan, he's draining it onto the ground. So I politely confront him, and I say, I got a drain pan. I get the middle finger. Says, F off, old man. Okay, a couple of weeks later, my daughter, she comes home, and, and she's born and raised here, went to Calaveras High School, got a good education, went on, she's gonna get her master's degree soon. We're all proud of her. Well, she comes home, and she says, Dad, what's going on in the driveway? And I said, yeah, things changed a little. So we have a family dinner. Casey and I are washing the dishes, looking out the window, and we see a bunny go by, and we're looking at the hawks. And she goes, Daddy, look, there's a pot worker peeing on our fence. And I said, I'm sorry, darling. And that's just, it's everything like that. It's, and she goes, Daddy, that's disgusting. You know, and then I see the sheriff down there, I see highway patrol, I see the code enforcement. These guys, they get good salaries, they have medical insurance, they have pensions. They're expensive, and it's not fair that we, the taxpayers, have to pay this to police these. And why do we do it? Because they choose not to comply with the rules. They choose not to get with the program. It's a liability we can't afford, and this is just the tip of the iceberg. You go down there now, yeah, they're right, there was a lot of rain. And right now today, there's a lot of tall grass that's dry, it's a fire hazard. The trees haven't been trimmed, they're going down for the ladder fuel. There's abandoned boat that's probably full of gas and oil. When the fire department comes up to put that fire out, it's gonna be a nightmare. It, it, it's too expensive, and I see good grows. There, there's good people who have good grows, and, and, and that's good, that probably is an asset. So it can be done, but let's look for the best, or the best of the best. We don't have to settle for this, not in our, not in our county. There's a lot of people, they're not the only frog in the pond, a lot of people wanna do this who will comply, and they'll, they'll have places that we could be proud of, like our, our, our wineries and our vineyards. The guy who spoke first this morning, I think that's gonna be a wonderful asset to the community. The marijuana grows should be like that. And I think you guys are up for a big battle, because I think if the word gets out that you guys are soft on enforcement, this thing's gonna blow up in our face. It's gotta be kinda like fish and game, you gotta be respected. We gotta know that not only do you bark, but you got teeth, and we're gonna follow the rules, and we're gonna get with the program, and there's no do-overs. I ain't gonna come up and say, oh, you know, I, I made a mistake, but I, I won't do it again. Hey, if I shoot a deer in the county park and tell that to fish and game, come on, they're, they're not gonna put up with that. We gotta get that flavor out, that if you're gonna grow pot, you're gonna comply with the rules, and you're gonna be an asset to the community. And I hope that you guys stick with your decision. It's, it's important, you got a tough job. Thanks.
Thank you. You're, you're welcome to come up.
I'm Gail with Yoon. I live at 12615 Brandy Lane. I'm in the last house on Brandy Lane, Larry Robbins is my neighbor. And, who's? He's down at the store at the start of Brandy Lane, he sells to campers going into the South Comanche area. I am here to urge and support the recommendation of staff that the appeal be denied. The, you have good reasons to deny it in these two issues, but because the statements of the applicant conflict with the visual evidence and photos of, of the Code Compliance. Now, so it may be a matter of credibility. And when I served on a jury for a drug trial many years ago in Baltimore, it was a matter of credibility of the witness. Now, I am here to dispute the credibility of the applicant. And I wanna make case in point, Jason Terramoto, on April 12th, in the material that you have at hand, states that, excuse me, yes, here it is, April 12th, to whom it may concern. And I want to focus on, he's trying to make his last paragraph and say how great he is. He says, "We continue to enjoy a relationship with the landowner and our immediate neighbors. Talk to me, talk to Larry, talk to Mel. We do not have a great relationship at all. From the time those first RVs appeared, and the time the 12 tents were there, the one porta potty, I submitted a complaint to Code Compliance on October 13th. By that time, there weren't even 12 tents, there were three or four of them. And I noted that the porta potty appeared near the property line 10 days after the camping commenced, and that the number of campers would likely exceed the capacity of the single porta potty. Mind you, this encampment occurred right next to, if you have that map up there, the parcel, the red line shows the road."
Can I interrupt you for just one second, please? You get five minutes for public comment, you got about two minutes left, and if you have really important points, I don't want you to miss those.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, I have a copy of my Code Compliance complaint. Eyes, this was done on October 13th. The, I noted in this complaint that it's September 28th, the two weeks had expired. The main thing is, is that due to a newspaper person coming out and talking to my neighbor, the tents disappeared one night because the newspaperman told people there that our neighbors were not happy. So that when Code Compliance finally came out, it saw only three RVs. And I could say that it has been a history that if I, I mean, I printed out the whole urgency ordinance, went through the whole thing, and anybody who applies for a permit to grow in this county ought to do the same and be prepared to, to fulfill, fulfill it immediately so that it's complete when the inspector comes, and not expect to bargain, negotiate, dilly-dally. We meant to, we made a mistake, none of those things cut it, in my view. And I am a neighbor, and it is not a good relationship. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I speak now?
Please.
My name's Mel Burkhart, I have a store right at the entrance of Brandy Lane, and, uh, we don't want them back there because of a lot of things, and there'd been a lot of traffic on the road, and the people that they had camping back there were, one night, were doing donuts right in front of, in front of my store, and broke the front window, eight-foot window out. And then I went back to talk to them, they denied it, so my neighbor went back there and talked to them, and they finally admitted it, 'cause I caught them on camera. And, uh, so they decided to pay, they were gonna pay for it. But there's all kinds of things like that, we're worried about the water issues, the wells around there aren't very good, and, uh, I don't think we need to be watering pot plants when we barely have enough water for ourselves. And everything else I have on my list was probably covered by these guys.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here for public comment? Okay, C and N, we'll go ahead and close the public comment, and do you have any rebuttals?
I do. In regards to the application pending certificate, it was issued on June 29th, and should have been up by June 30th. That's a reasonable expectation that it would be posted on a signboard with reflective material and weatherproof by then. So it shouldn't have taken 10 months to properly post the application pending certificate. And pursuant to the urgency ordinance, the cultivation area should have been fenced on June 30th, and since it was an existing grow prior to the urgency ordinance, it should have been fenced in upon applying for registration. And it also sounds that there is a history of code violations associated with this grow and property.
Is that it? Thank you.
Well, excuse me, on that, uh, was there a fencing requirement? I mean, before there was regulation of cannabis growth, there were no, no requirements specifically saying cannabis needs to be fenced, right?
I believe there were screening requirements, but not fencing.
Ah, okay.
Prior to the adoption of the urgency ordinance, there were no regulations in place, yeah. I think everyone tried to screen it, but that was not a requirement, that was just for their?
Yeah.
When they passed the ordinance on May 10th, and they were going to apply, they had a deadline of June 30th, so between that May and June 30th, they had a six weeks' notice there. Okay, so does the appellant wanna come back up and rebuttal comments today?
We, uh, there is no new information that was presented by public comment related to the posting or that. We weren't prepared to address those issues. We, we disagree with significance amount of it, but I don't think it's before the, the commission, so we're not going to address that.
Okay.
Okay.
You want to speak to Code Compliance?
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm gonna, he's gonna have some questions for Code Compliance, and obviously you'll have an opportunity to respond if there's anything there. Thank you.
Just one question, and that is, if you could clear up what, what was told to the applicant about, or the agent of the applicant, about your referral to the planning department, and when was that information passed on?
Go back through my emails, but I told Jason, I think that was sometime in February, that I had referred him, this project to planning. At that point, I had, did not tell him that I had recommended him for denial. I left that, our recommendation is simply that, it's a recommendation, we turn that over to the planning department. They go through all of the information that's provided, and they decide at that point. So I didn't feel that it was my place to say where they stood in the process, and I, I did tell Jason that I had referred him to planning, and that I wasn't sure at that time who was in charge of that project. And I spoke back and forth with Miguel about what was going on out there. But I, I think that was, well, it would have been, I've got all my emails, it would have been in, in February after the 22nd, that I responded to an email from Jason asking, I think he was asking me what the status was, and I told him I had turned it over to planning, and I wasn't sure who was in charge.
Okay.
So I have a question, on the fence, it's the gate, I should say. There's a picture presented by Mr. Terramoto, which, which shows this structure of a gate. I don't believe it has the actual fencing on it. Is that actually on the site?
Can I, can I take a look? Can I come take a look at that one? I don't know.
They testified a little bit ago that that gate was there, but it wasn't installed, it was, the posts were up, the gate itself was lying in the center somewhere.
That gate is? I believe that is the gate that was there when, when we were out there for the final inspection. It didn't have the, the cross members inside the framework of the gate, but that gate was?
Well, okay, you showed a picture in January. One of the exhibits in here, and it's just, you can barely see the edge of the gate, and it had none of the cross members. That's a January photo, I think you said.
That gate was not there until March, March 31st. That, that gate didn't exist, is, to my knowledge.
The one with the cross members?
No, that, the wooden framed gate at all, there was no gate there prior to that March 31st that I was aware of.
This is on, I think, planning submitted, January 12th, 2007, is that? Very rough game, what is?
That is a picture from March 31st, that picture?
Can you put the picture up on the screen that they're talking about so the public can see it, please?
It's the one that, that has the reflective, the metal?
Yeah.
There we go, thank you.
Yeah, that was from the 31st.
So?
Yeah, must be my error, I'm looking at the back of the picture, and it shows January 12th, apparently the date's previous page on March 31st, which is interesting because that gate is so very different than the other one with all the cross beams in it, it's completely different.
So were the cross members, the picture of the cross members on the gate, was that there on March 31st as well as this?
No, this was the only thing I saw.
So the, the pictures of the cross bracing was submitted after your 31st inspection?
Yes.
By the appellant?
Yes.
Got it.
And you did not see that on the ground anywhere in the vicinity, on March 31st?
Thank you. Do you have any last words you wanna say for, for comments or your guide?
Very briefly, yeah, we, what she testified to earlier, too, what she appeared to use, that we were in the process, the applicant was in the process of making it more sturdy, that was occurring while she was there. We agree that it wasn't that, that improvement of making it more sturdy was not complete, but the gate had been there, and the wires had been attached to it. The only thing that was occurring at that point was that they were making the gate?
The only thing that was occurring at that point was that they were making the gate more sturdy so it would operate better. That was literally it. Okay.
Great, thank you. Okay, um, I'm gonna close the hearing and bring it back to the commissioners for discussion. Wanna start down there?
I will. It seems to me that the, the focus by the appellant on the March 31 date is, is not correct. That under the urgency ordinance, it's my view that this posting should've been accomplished right after they got the application pending certificate by June 30th. And it certainly shouldn't have taken nine months to get that done. I can understand why they moved it inside in January, but that's because it wasn't properly weatherproofed. I mean, rain is part of weather. And so it seems to me there's a fairly clear non-compliance with respect to that. And we don't even need to get to the issue whether the, the metal strips are reflective or not. There was a non-compliance non, long before that. But if I had to decide, I would say that that doesn't qualify as reflective. It's shiny, but it's not reflective. It's not that tough to get reflective tape and put it on a sign. And on the fencing, again, it's a clear non-compliance, long past the deadline of June 30th. It may have been because of budget troubles, that the fence wasn't put in earlier, but that's an excuse that doesn't have any basis in the urgency ordinance. So it's just a simple, it's just non-compliance, period.
I agree with Kelly. They were supposed to be in compliance back in June. If it was in compliance back in June, there wouldn't be issues with the reflectiveness, and there wouldn't be issues with the weather, because it would've already been done. It should've been able to stand the weather from June all the way to today. So it was not a compliance in the beginning. So I agree there. Doesn't matter what they did in March.
Well, I think the arguments that it doesn't matter until March are valid, but we apparently did give them some extensions. However, they didn't meet these extensions. And frankly, it was a credibility issue with some of the statements made today by the applicant and, uh, or his attorney. Saying one thing and then finding out it's just very, very different than the emails, there's proof that in fact, code compliance did warn them that it was not going to be, or that they were gonna be recommended for denial, and yet he told us very clearly that it wasn't true. And then the business about the gate is baloney, frankly. That gate wasn't there, and he had months and at least days warning. What does it take to put up the wire over, over the T-post or the, for the gate structure? Could be done in minutes. So I'd have to go along with the...
Well, I'd agree with that. Uh, I do commend code compliance for trying to work with these people and get it, get it in compliance. Uh, I think it, there are occasions where, where the cultivators are trying in very good faith to do what the ordinance, um, requires, and I think it's great that code compliance can give a couple of chances. However, we have limited resort, resources. These people were given multiple chances. They knew the inspector was coming out on March 31st. Uh, I agree that the gate, the fence should've been done months before that. The shininess of the metal isn't of great concern to me, but I think that they certainly had more than their fair amount of chances, and I'm, uh, ready to deny the appeal.
Are you ready to read the resolution?
Yes.
Staff recommends that the planning commission adopt Resolution 2017-038, thus denying 2016-671 appeal, thereby upholding the planning director's determination to deny Application 2016-671.
Okay, there is a typo in your resolution. Under the first whereas clause, it says that they, we received a commercial cannabis registration on June 29, 2017. Should be 2016.
Very first whereas. Okay, 038.
Okay, um, do we have a motion as amended?
Some...
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0, thank you.
Who's the second? I'm sorry.
So I would like, the appellant left, but you still need to put on the record...
This action is final, and was appealed within fifteen calendar days to the board supervisor.
Thank you. Okay, all right, so now we will, before we start this next hearing, if you guys don't mind, we're gonna take a one-hour lunch and be back in about five minutes to one.